Welcome to the November meeting of the Phillips Town Planning Board. Do the roll call, please.
Anthony Moranti.
Here.
Kim Connor.
Here.
Dennis Gagnon.
Here.
David Hardy.
Here.
Peter Lewis.
Here.[45.97][45.97](Laughter).
Always has to make an entrance.[48.96][48.96](Laughter).
Neil Toman.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
(Inaudible).[56.23][56.23](Laughter).
Approval of minutes from October. Anybody have additions, deletions, corrections?
So I have one correction, which I already talked to Tara about. It's just a labeling issue with the return of escrow.
Oh.
That it's for the different, it's not Lady Blue Devil's Lane.
Okay.
It's Phillips Town Square.
Okay.
And that's it for me.
Anybody else? Motion to adopt the October 2017 minutes.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to jockey the agenda around tonight. Item number two on the agenda is Barbara Peck-Eiler, and we're going to table that because there are issues regarding the access and need to be addressed by attorney. So I need a motion to table the Peck-Eiler application for now.
(Inaudible). Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're going to hold off on a public hearing until Mr. Buck's architect arrives. So...
(Inaudible).
And I'm holding the Hudson-Hamiltons' review, reserve till the end because it's going to take a bit of discussion. So the last item is labeled as new business. Robert Miller Altech Service Center, 1380 Route 9 Garrison. The applicant seeking site plan approval for motor vehicle service center with apartment above, et cetera. So anyone here to speak for Miller Altech?
I'm Mike Reap, architect. This is Jason Miller.
I'm sorry, your name again?
Mike Reap, I'm the architect.
Yeah, speaking to Mike.
I'm Mike Reap, I'm the architect. This is Jason Miller, the owner. And there was an existing auto repair garage with an apartment above it currently, but it's not in use. We're looking to put it into use. He's looking to purchase the property and put it into use.
I remember Paul Nolte having that garage. Do you remember, do you know how long it's been vacant?
No.
I believe it's been roughly 20 years.
Okay. We've got Ron's comments on this. Ron, would you like?
As indicated, it's an existing facility. There's physically no site improvements planned. The applicant is merely proposing to reactivate a former use of the property being auto repair. And looking at the drawings, he also offers the suggestion that there will be some limited car sales, which the applicant should discuss, so we understand the magnitude of that. And for that reason, just because of the issue of car sales, I'm suggesting that the attorney weigh in just to verify that that is an ancillary use to the auto repair business so that that doesn't cause any issues. With respect to the process to be followed by the board, since there's no site improvements, there's no physical alterations that are being proposed, it would qualify as a minor project pursuant to your site plan regulations. So it should be so classified at tonight's meeting. There's some minor technical things that need to be resolved on the plan. The significant issue for the board to consider tonight is whether you wish to conduct a site visit just to evaluate the proposal in light of the fact that it's been inactive for so long. There's some minor seeker issues to address on the EAF form that's been filed, but they're easily correctable. Corrected form, I'm certain, will come in shortly to correct the board's files. And the last thing that we'll accomplish on the board's behalf, I'll work with Tara to make sure that referrals are made to Putnam County Planning since it's along Route 9.
Anything from the board at the moment? Everybody have a chance to read Ron's report?
Do we need to refer to the fire department?
You could if you wish. I was uncertain of it since there's no improvements, all existing site conditions will remain, but it's easily something that can be done.
I think almost as a matter of courtesy and record that we do it.
Sure.
I don't know if it ever was before, and I, you know, anybody's been around the area for a while and knows what it is. So let's, shall we classify this application as minor site plan? Motion?
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And referrals to county? And I'm assuming it's Garrison Fire Department, but...
Yeah, I would think it would be.
Think it is.
Not Conwell Village?
Just in case. Do it to both and see whose jurisdiction it's in. Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to that effect? Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fun part, site inspection? Anybody not seen that? Not familiar with it?
So it's the building that has sort of brown stone on the outside with a yellowish mortar between the stones?
Yes.
Just past three more before you get to 403.
Or you're going the other way, past the afterlight station.
Yes.
And it was recently cleaned up or something? I seem to feel like I...
The previous owner actually still lives in the apartment above it, so they've been, you know, maintaining the property and the building and all of that.
All right. Well Tara, if you checked the calendar, it was set a site visit.
December 2nd.
December 2nd? Anybody okay with December 2nd, or anybody not okay with December 2nd, site visit? Anyone? Okay.
December 2nd is a Saturday.
Oh, no, it's going to be a Saturday.
I probably will not be there.
I think I'm at Foxwoods on the 2nd for a concert, right?
Oh.
No, but that's fine.
I can make it independent.
Yeah, okay.
You guys should still go ahead.
Okay, let's, is that the 3rd we said? Yeah.
Third, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 3rd. Okay. Motion, site visit from December 3rd?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, babe.
Okay. Getting back to the agenda. We're on for public hearing now for 1657 Route 9D. Proposed renovation in addition to existing residence, construction of new masonry structure for use of the home office, new pool and poolhouse, new driveways to access the home office, and redefine the main entrance to the residence. Speaking on behalf...
Gladon Watson from Beadie and Watson, representing 1657 Route 9D. With me is the project architect, Tim Moore, which we've met before, and Christopher Buck, member of the LLC that owns the property. We're dealing with the former, for those of you who know it as the Patterson property, we're dealing with the former Patterson property. It's located on the west side of Route 9D, immediately opposite the Manitou School, former Plumbush Restaurant. It's on a 33-acre piece. The property is wooded to the west and south, I should have said immediately north, I myself turned around. It's wooded to the west and to the south, very steep, very, and not being touched. There is an existing house on the property. It's been there for well over 100 years. And what you see, this is a little misleading in that, what you see in the light, in the lighter brown color, is the existing, what's left of the existing house. A significant addition has been taken down. What you see in the darker brown is the proposed addition. The addition falls down the hill to the west where there's a garage, and under that garage, that garage is under a green roof, so I probably should have colored it green, but none of this is visible from the road. We are realigning the driveways. Today, there's a driveway that comes pretty much straight in slight bends and goes off the property and services a neighbor to the east and turns up to the existing house and services that house. There's also a back road that comes in from Gilbo Lane and comes more straighter than is shown and comes up to the back of the house. For aesthetic landscaping reasons, it's desired to relocate the driveway so there'll be a curvilinear approach to the house, both on the main entry, which will utilize the existing main entry, which was really an old farm entry at one point, but it's been used as the main entry for many years. Come in without changing the entrance on Route 9, they'll come in, bend to the right, bend to the left, come over a slight knoll, and happen upon the house, so the house will be a little bit of a pleasant surprise as you approach it. The other advantage of the driveway, the way it's been locating, is that it affords a very pleasant, both distant and near views. The lighter green area is all pretty much meadow. There is some, there's some second growth in it, but it's pretty much all meadow. There's an existing pool that will be replaced by this pool. It moves it further from the house. There's proposed, and this is a cabana building, a poolhouse, a barn, and the addition. As I said, nothing within the first couple of hundred feet except for driveway, except for a new electric line, which will be buried. The electric service will be taken off of Route 9D and come directly in. Today, it comes in from Gilbo Lane. The service is not adequate. The lines are broken and rotten and ready to be removed.
Glenn, a question about the road, just while I think of it. The road coming in and providing access to the other property, Ms. Patterson, is that going to have an easement on it? Is it...
There is an easement on it.
There is already?
Well, there's an easement on the property for a driveway.
Oh.
It is, it was, it's quite old. It is not, its location is not specified. It just says there's an easement. And what you see here is the way it's used today.
Okay.
Except for right in this little corner here, we're intending to change this intersection a little bit, or create this intersection, and a slight realignment. So I, oh, I'm sorry. And then another drive, this driveway back here to where there'll be a home, will there be, Mr. Buck will maintain his office. We're proposing a parking lot and separate sewage disposal system in this area. The testing has been made, that's all positive. The driveway that we're using is actually in place, except for maybe the last 100 feet, where we'll have to construct the parking lot. That's in a little hollow. This is up on a little rise. So there'll be that additional disturbance, but again, we're using an existing driveway for the most part. There will be new, electrical service will run down. This is across a meadow, so there'll be no woods cut. Over here, the electric will come in, there'll be a little bit of woods, but we've chosen a route where we can avoid removing any large trees. I think I've touched on all major site plan elements. Tim knows the site plan much, the site better than I do, and I'll let him add anything to that and then show you the building.
One additional, Ken, one additional question about, I know just south of that, currently there's another access to that second property. Yeah, will that remain?
That remains. We have no...
That misses, miss...
Okay.
One of the Patterson children owns that piece of property.
Right, okay.
Margaret. No, no, she's talking about Margaret's, Margaret's driveway.
This has some pretty strange...
So while you're mentioning trees and not cutting trees, there, the trees that are large that were by, where the driveway was, those will still be cut, is that right?
There are some, there are...
Yeah, the upper ones that are right in here, we're going to cut, we're keeping, and then there are a bunch down here that are just pretty trashed at this point, but there's pretty much a grove, or whatever you want to call it, here that we're going to be able to keep. But these right up in here, because we're regrading, will go. And we don't cut down the trees lightly, but they're really... And also this, the way this curls around, it also takes advantage of some existing trees. And the same is true of this driveway. There's a line of trees right here, a couple of maples and a big oak, and so we're using that actually to bounce the driveway off visually. And then that berm over the garage will actually pick up the grading of the trees, so it all appears to be of a piece. The garage will be completely invisible from the approach and certainly from the road.
Excuse me, cue some mic if you guys...
Oh, sorry. Sorry. I guess, I should know better.
How much disturbance do you expect with new road system?
That's more Glenn's bailiwick, but...
I don't recall the answer, but I'm pretty certain it's over five acres that we have to worry about a slip.
Okay.
I'll check that.
And we are planning to phase the construction also, so we're not planning to have the whole place open at one time.
The proposed party will be visible from the road?
Possibly, but it's well back, and there's quite a bit of low growth and coverage right there. So I mean, it's well back from the road. I mean, right now, there's currently a little chicken coop right here, which I'm not even sure you can see that. Or if you're looking that way, you're going to probably run into somebody, frankly. So, any more site questions? You want me to walk you through the thinking on the house?
Yep.
So fundamentally, what we've done is we're retaining the old building. We've got quite a bit of structural repair work and things to do. We're taking out some of the old windows on this side in particular. It's been hacked up quite a bit over the years.
Historic designation or significance?
It has, it's on the National Register, yes.
Oh, it is.
We have reopened, there's, right now, on the front of it, on the left side, as you're approaching it, there's actually, they had a port cochere and they covered up what was actually the old kitchen entrance, so we're opening that back up, which is what that little sketch drawing is. Shows you how the front entrance is being realigned so that we can open up the basement again, which was originally more like an English basement. So it has windows down there that all got covered up, and they extend the porch, I imagine, in the late 20s or possibly the early 30s. And then the addition, the whole intention of the addition and the way we rerouted the driveway is so when you come to the house, your impression really is of the old house, and that's really what the star of the show is. The addition is all muted colors, it's, and natural materials like granite, copper, and bronze, and then obviously some glass. But the whole intention with plantings, the berming and all that, is that it's really very recessive when you come to the house. What you really notice when you drive down the driveway is the house. So it's really kind of the star of the show, being the old historic property. And then the addition really takes care of modern amenities like a kitchen and things that the house is sort of a little big house. It's very grand and tall, but actually, it's really not that, not that big, and the shape of it is pretty hard to break into sort of modern living requirements, like a kitchen, closets, bathrooms, all that kind of thing. It becomes very inefficient very quickly. So we've really made, the bulk of the living zone of the house is really in the addition. There's a living room and a dining room in the main house, in the old house, and a couple bedrooms on the second floor. And the third floor is basically a play space for, and, you know, a study space eventually for the children. And someday, I suppose, it'd probably be guest bedrooms, but it's pretty well up, it's pretty high up there, actually.
How many bedrooms will it all, will there be altogether?
What's that?
How many bedrooms will there be altogether?
There'll just be the two bedrooms on this floor and a master bedroom on this floor, and there's a guest bedroom in this wing right here. So grand total of four.
And, do you have to, you have to expand the septic, I assume?
We're putting an entirely new septic. The septic is, we think, there's a large vault, for lack of a better word, cistern in the far field down below the house, and we're pretty certain that was the functioning septic system.
Did you point out where the, where the existing septic would be? Where you, where you think it is?
We're pretty certain it's down right here.
And you're proposing one where?
We're going to put new ones here, and our backup's over here.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Yep.
Have you done tests yet?
Yes, we've done all the per, you know, we've sort of learned that lesson.[1412.25][1412.25](Laughter). Yeah, there's plenty of room for septic fields here.
I don't mean that, I mean the absorption.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, it's, the soil is excellent for it. This whole area is really excellent for it. It's really well drained, so there are no issues whatsoever.
Okay.
And, I don't know, we're really excited. It's a really cool old house. It's had some very interesting, we did a pretty good study on its evolution, and originally it was a Mansard roof house, and it was Second Empire and sort of a Herman Munster house. And then somewhere in there, they elected to change it to a more Italianate house, and so, you know, these, on the lower floors, you have these very small sort of eyebrow arches, and then you've got full round classical arches on the top. And the construction's a little funky, where they went straight up with a brick. So if you, if you want to see some pictures of that, I'll show you those before we get it completely done, but it's pretty interesting.
From the late monster period.
The late monster period, yes, yes. Pre-Adams.
Who's empire?
The third floor, there's no occupancy on the third floor.
The third floor will just be used as a kind of a play space, study space.
Do you have, do you have to put in a fire suppression system?
We're planning to anyway, actually.
And you're going from square footage on the original building to additional...
Original building was probably, living square footage was around eight, eight, it was four and, yeah, maybe six and a half, 7,000 square feet.
And the addition?
The addition is, the addition brings the whole thing up to about 16, but that's also because we have a full basement that's completely occupied.
Okay.
So we're really, you know, in terms of kind of normative living space, we're probably adding more in the neighborhood of, I don't know, the addition's probably about 8,000 square feet or so, and then you've got a full floor underneath it that goes the whole thing. And then, and then the, because the, the main living space, you know, this is tinier here, there's full, there's much fuller footprint than there is building on the top, if that makes any sense.
Question from the board? Dave? Anyone? Kim? Anyone? Ron, any comments?
Did you say the building is on the National Registry?
The, I believe the old part of the house, yes, is on the Historic Register, through the National Register.
Has there been communications in terms of all the renovations you're doing?
We have not, we, well, we submitted the SECRRA information, right? And we presumably would be hearing back from, through you guys for that, correct?
I, you're saying that material has been submitted to the board?
I believe when we, when we did the application form, we indicated that it was, yes.
Okay. I'll just research that and understand what's, what's involved, right?
Are they written, SHPO or anything?
That's what I'm wondering. I'm wondering. Normally it would be some communications in terms of their proposal to renovate or demolish. That's what you've seen before.
Maybe trade or something with them.
Right.
I mean, my recollection is that generally you have, the primary issue, at least in terms of, not so much the register, but in terms of state regulations and things like that, is whether you're going to look for tax credits and that sort of thing.
Doesn't, doesn't limit what you can remove or demolish? That's the first thing I thought of.
If, if they deem the demolition to change its status as an Historic Register, we go off the registry, but I don't believe there's any kind of enforcement component to it.
I think it takes effect unless you've used that status to leverage a tax advantage or a grant of some sort.
Right.
And then they have something to say, otherwise I don't think they have anything to say.
So with that in mind, we did, I mean, we did do a full-blown recording of the house. We photographed it. We did paint tests, paint samples. We have all the trim from it. So we, we basically have documented everything we, everything we've done prior to taking it apart. But, for instance, the framing, I was, the structural engineer and I were just in there for the last two days. You know, the framing's going to be a bit of an adventure getting that all square and also getting the shell of the building stable. So we really had to take the interior apart in order to work on it, frankly.
So I'm just going to ask Ron a side question, which is, so when we were looking at the former guidance, guidance, for example...
That's exactly what I recall.
Yeah. So I'm wondering if, and there was a discussion about what the siding needed to be because the period was...
Right.
Yeah.
They had very clear guidance on the exterior improvements that were proposed.
Right. And I just wonder if that might relate to what Neil said about grants, because it's quite possible that that organization...
Again, there's, I'll research what's been filed, and if there needs to be contact with SHPO, we'll, we'll accomplish that on your behalf.
One of the issues generally with the National Park Service guidelines in terms of additions is that they really want you to make a distinction between the old and the new. And that, you know, it doesn't look like you've just morphed the old building into a bigger thing, so you can't distinguish what part of it was old and what was new. And so this very much is stylistically distinct from this, but at the same time, trying, we're making every effort to make it very much playing the second fiddle to the main house, to the old house, which is pretty much my understanding of how those guidelines run.
Okay. Anybody else on the board? Okay, open it to the public. Comments on this project from anybody in the audience? Please come out and state your name, microphone.
Good evening. My name is Jason Biafor. I'm the property owner at this lot. I'm the property owner at this lot here now formerly Nary. I didn't have a chance to speak to the applicant beforehand, but I'm just here to lend my support of this project. Having looked at the plans, I think that at least aesthetically and for myself and for my neighbors who are in very close proximity, we've had no issues from the discussions I've had with them. The only question that I had was with respect to Gilbo Lane, and I don't know if, if the gentleman can answer how the construction phases are gonna unfold, is that gonna see an increase in construction traffic? And that's only a concern because I have young children, my neighbor has young children. I'm sure it's been taken into account, but I was hoping to hear something about that. And also, upon completion of the project, is, is there any information with respect to maintenance of Gilbo Lane? And finally, if there's any information on who owns Gilbo Lane? I understand that at one time it was a state road, and until sometime in the sixties or seventies it was maintained. Rumor is that it was abandoned, but I have no information on that or seen anything to that effect. So I'm just curious if, as part of this application, they have any information on those issues, and that's all. But I will reiterate that myself and my neighbors are otherwise in complete support of the project as it's been proposed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Buck.
The access during the construction is going to be from 9D on the existing driveway there. We're going to, where are we? Using the existing driveway. We're, we're going to maintain this access, improve it, but during the construction, all the equipment will be coming in from, from 9D.
Can you speak as far as the Gilbo Lane status? Do you have any idea?
It's listed, it's, it's currently listed as a private road. I haven't researched it, so I don't know. It undoubtedly was part of the, part of what was eventually turned into 9D, but I doubt that it was a state road because I think 9D was being created at the time. It was probab, it could possibly have been a county road or a town road before that, but I know it's not, it's not, I did do the research to know that the town carries it as a private road.
I'd just like to clarify a little bit what Chris was just saying. The, the barn area, we're anticipating the barn area and this area currently in front of the house where the driveway is, we're anticipating that is all gonna be used for construction staging, the barn in particular. So the barn's actually the first thing we'll build, right up, we're doing, we're hoping to do the power very shortly, and then the barn, we would hope to build this spring, but that'll basically be our staging area. So the emphasis really will be on bringing the trucks and things on this side.
You said it'd be done in stages. How long do you expect this whole project to take?
Well, that's a good question. I'm, we're going to, we, we need to start, the, the plan would be to start reinforcing and reframing and doing whatever we need to do to get the old part of the building in a secure place before we start digging a fourteen-foot-deep hole next to it. So we really have to first get that squared away, so I'm anticipating we'd start construction on the addition proper in the fall.
And all the roads and everything?
The roads, we would do this spring also. So we, we get, we do some of the major landscape moves and get the barn in, get the power in, so, and then whether, you know, when the office and the, and the pool area starts, that's really more a question of staging and working with a contractor and figuring out what's the most cost-effective and time-worthy way to do that.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't really have an answer for that part yet.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience? Ron, any closing comments?
No, as, as the board understands, the project's been before you before. It secured a variance from the ZBA for the size of the garage that's been secured. Necessary referrals have been accomplished, and it was an obligation of the board to just have this public hearing conducted. So procedurally, you could be ready for taking action on the project, depending on what we might hear from SHPO.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We need a secret declaration?
If you're prepared, or we could prepare documents for the next meeting. It's your decision.
I'll entertain that motion. I'd direct Ron to prepare secret declaration. Second?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, folks. Fun and games. assessment and revised preliminary drawings. Glenn? Anybody whistle? No. Okay.
Well, I'm sure you've all slept soundly each night as you started to read that, and I hope you've gotten all the way through it.
I guarantee some sleep.
As, as you know, we've submitted a rather lengthy document. We've tried to address all of the elements in your Part II. I know you have a report from AKRF. I do have to point out one glaring error that we made in that we reproduced the wrong Part II. It was a clerical error in the, in the, in my office, and I apologize for that.
That was last month, right? It's not the one we have now, is it?
It's the one you have now. The Part II is the incorrect Part II. Fortunately, however, when we were working with, we were working with the correct Part II, so the subject matter in the back is, is correct. So we're here to discuss anything you want. We're here to receive, formally receive AKRF's report and respond to any questions you might have, and hopefully move ourselves forward.
Well, Graham couldn't be here tonight. He's been out of state, because we were advised on the meeting, so, Ron, if you have comment on this?
Yeah, the board has received comments from AKRF. They, they've organized the comments into two separate memoranda. One concerns the review of the EAF document itself, and the second one is specific to the traffic impact study that was included in part of the Part III document. And AKRF has attempted to follow the format that's presented in your EAF document. They've organized their comments between Part I, Part II, and Part III. Part I comments are being offered just to, just for them to identify issues that they believe warrant more discussion or clarification in Part III. There's no, there's no need or desire to see Part I modified in any way. Part I is the applicant's document that's been accepted by the board. And you've also accepted the Part II document. The, again, the statement that's in the AKRF memorandum merely identifies the comment that Glenn has offered, that the board's adopted Part II statement should be included in that, rather than the one that accidentally got inserted. And then separately, they just walked through the variety of the, of the Part III analyses that were done. They've either indicated areas where they feel further information could be pulled forward from the original conservation analyses. If there's any classifications that are necessary, they've identified them. So I think it's, it should be a pretty simple matter, I believe, for the, for the applicant to finalize the Part III statements and bring, bring back a document that you should be prepared to take an action on, to make a determination on seeker. Separately, as I said, they've also given very specific comments on the traffic impact study. There's a few areas that, that they were seeking more information, but as you will note, for the most part, the traffic impact study has addressed almost all of their prior comments. So that's, that's where we sit today. The goal of us is to formally present this to the applicant, these, these comments from AKRF, and determine if there's any further comments that the board wishes to have discussed or addressed by the applicant. So that this would be the time for you to raise any other issues beyond what's presented in the technical memorandum.
Okay. Anybody start this? Especially on the traffic study? Or the other one, too?
So, go ahead, Dave. You go ahead.
While, while you're waiting, I have, I have a couple, but this probably, you know, the timber frame house, or barn, I mean, right, is, there, there was some indication that nobody was sure with what was gonna happen to that. Is that correct? I mean, and then we heard that it was gonna get moved into someplace on the property?
I don't believe there's any intention to move it. What is, it's gonna be subject to an adaptive reuse of, of that thing? There's a couple of options within the, it will be within the control of the homeowners' association. Exactly what those uses will be, there's been talk about the office for the homeowners' association, they're talking, talking about a, a gathering place, has been talking, there's been talk about an exercise area, gym area. So I, if, have I stated that correctly?
Yes.
So, so the barn is not going to be removed, it's not going to be moved or removed, but it will be adaptively reused. The exact use of that building is still under discussion.
Although, you know, what caught, one of the things that caught my eye was that in, in here, there was a mention made that if it couldn't be placed properly or something like that, it would be sold to somebody. To be reassembled somewhere else, what, so, I just, I thought some word.
Speak, speak in the microphone. Yeah. Steve Gross, Hudson Highlands Environmental Consulting. You're, you're talking about the, the report that was done by my colleague when she did the original assessment of all the structures. And this was before any planning was done for what to do with it. In her initial report, she didn't know what would be happening with it, so she put in there, she recommended that it be preserved, but if it was not to be preserved, then she would, wanted to see it documented in the different elements to be saved, to be salvaged. But the actual plan by the applicant is to save the building, is, is to preserve the building. So that's where that language was that you're talking about.
Oh, I see, because, you know, I assumed that this was, that was still in motion because it was in one of these attachments, right?
It was one of the, it's the initial assessment
Right.
that provided base information for the decisions to be made for how to design the plan and what to do with the different buildings.
And you're, you're committed to keeping, keeping it on site and?
Yes.
And, and rebuild?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Anyone else? Kim?
No.
Glenn, this report, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So, on the first page of the Part III, in the introduction, in the third paragraph, it says, "The commercial parcel will remain commercial and will not be part of the homeowners' association that will manage the conservation subdivision." What is the commercial parcel? Is that the piece that's in the manufacturing?
If you noticed that, if you noticed that the parcel grew from two hundred and five point six acres to two hundred and ten point something recently? That's because the company bought the old PEMCORP building
Yeah.
where there's, there was a chiropractor studio nine-hair design. That building was bought.
Okay.
And we want to adjust the lot line between that building and, and the original Hudson Highlands property, which would allow us to move the road further away from Clove Creek and avoiding, at, avoiding or at least minimizing any impact on Clove Creek. So we included that property in the subdivision so that it could, so that we could make that adjustment, and we have to do that because of the size of the lots. And, but functionally, once that's done, that building will not be part of the homeowners' association, it will be, continue to be used as it is rented commercial space.
So what about the part of the parcel that's in the M district?
Well, the part of the parcel that's in the M district is, it's not that piece. That's a whole other piece. There is a petition before the town board to change the zoning, and that was made, that was revealed to you. It will either solidify our count at twenty-four or twenty-five, depending on how we end up with, with the two numbers that were bouncing between Ron Gaynor's office and my office, or twenty-two or twenty-three, because that, that, those two, that will generate two lots if it is not, if it is, if the zoning is changed and, and it's counted as part of the subdivision. Otherwise, it'll just be incorporated into the subdivision, and the particular land other than the roadway will be, will be encumbered with a conservation easement.
So I have a bunch of different things. When we go through this, so Ron, I'm not sure if this is the, the time to talk about this, but one of the things that are repeatedly in here, when you discuss potential issues with the water, for example, there's talk about, you know, using algicides. And yet, in the, in the back, you know, there's a discussion about not overusing algicides and not relying too, too much on chemical solutions for the pond, and instead, you know, looking to improve the pond in such a way that you won't have to do that. And it just seemed to me that, that often when there's a, you know, there's a question about, you know, there's, we have a, an issue, and then the solution is, oh, we're just gonna use algicide. So I'm just wondering, is that, is now the time to talk about that sort of thing?
I think it, it should be, and possibly it's, it's a matter that needs to be directed towards AKRF to provide further guidance back to the board.
We had some discussion about that. We, we went to the Conservation Board on Tuesday night and had a discussion about that. The intention, and we can put this in there, the intention is to have the pond managed by, by, probably by an ally who did that report. That report is, the regulations have changed in the last three years, and Max, the wetlands inspector, was pointing that out. So our intention is to have a program for that pond to do what is necessary to improve itself. Max actually mentioned this, that, it was exactly what you said. The ultimate goal is to get the pond functioning on its own in such a way that you either eliminate or minimize the use of, of algicides or chemicals, and we will, we will make a commitment to that in the, in the EAF.
So you'll restate as necessary to make that clear?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
So similarly, whenever we talk about water here, we're told that there, the stormwater, the SWPP is gonna be robust and strong and, and make sure that all stormwater is adequately managed. And I noticed in Mr. Treulstedt's memo that he felt that that needed to be, I would just echo how clear- echo how clear that plan would have to be. Because it's sort of, it's sort of like this big umbrella, like it's going to save everything, right?
You're correct, and my answer is actually the same thing. He said we should make a commitment to developing that stormwater pollution prevention plan within the guidelines established by the state, and we're happy to make that correction. Really, I can state, from my perspective, that we really didn't have any objections to the comments that were made. Some of, there were a lot of, in the comments on the EAF, there were a lot of just observations that we can, and if you read it, there were a lot of points that this needs clarification, move this to here to make it look more understandable, easier to read, no problem. There were a couple of issues. Horse trails, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't address, we will address it, but I'll tell you the address is that we're not going to do the horse trails, because there is a significant amount of concern with regard to erosion and that might cause. It came from, it came from the conservation board, it's come at these meetings, so we'll, we'll put that in, that we eliminated that, and that will be the, that will be the solution to that problem. But as far as there's other concerns, I didn't see anything in there that wanted me to call them up and yell at them. In fact, I thought they were, I thought they were all quite reasonable, it's not like when I call up and yell at Ron, but-
So I ignore it, that's all right.
You don't abuse our engineer, do you?
No.
Okay. Just checking.
So, you're eliminating the horse trails?
The trails, yes.
Completely.
Yes. Well, there will be, we'll be able to take advantage of the road that's already, already there, and being preserved, the historic road won't require us to build any trails.
Right.
You know, frankly, I think there'll be some, you know, we talked about the idea of putting a shoulder on the road that will allow people to ride up and down the roads, on the edge side of the road. So with, that's another possibility.
I was just more concerned about the horses. I mean, they, horses need to move around.
Yeah, they will, there will be places for them to exercise and-
So there will be a paddock that will be big enough to accommodate the number of horses that are there?
Well, I'm relying on, Mr. Lisiago's much more of an expert about that than I, but yes, the answer is yes.
So, to that, the horses, I assume that the, I don't know even much about horses, but I assume that the, that the waste material is going to be collected from the building, yes?
Yes, there's a waste manag, there's a manure management plan in there.
But my question is, I, because I looked, I found a website, so I, like I say, they could be wrong or something like that, but they said that each horse needed to exercise for an hour a day. And I did a little math that went with that, and 40 horses and all that kind of stuff, and it seemed like there was going to be a considerable amount of waste left out in the subdivision if, unless, you know, they're picking it up from some other area where the horses are enclosed or something like that. But if everybody is exercising it down the spine, or in some other similarly appropriate place to ride, I just wanted to know, you know, if there was any thought about that.
Hello, Ulysses Lisiaga. I'm part of the applicant team. Yes, so all those are legitimate concerns, and we are approaching, we are not experts in equestrian facilities, but I grew up riding horses, I grew up riding competitively, and I, I just want to tell you a little bit of what this push for the horse facility, I have five children, they all ride horses, they all ride competitively. One of my daughters was sixth national in pony finals in Kentucky over the summer, so we know, we do know horses, so. But like you say, people don't, are not familiar with how it works. They do have to, just one thing aside, last year I was training under an Olympian from Canada. So, we want to make it nice, we want to make it clean, we want to make it proper, and this is going to be a boutique facility, even when 40 horses sound like a lot of animals. The place that I ride now in Riverdale has 200 horses. And I, when it properly managed, there's no horse waste all over the place. So, the way, the way it works, every horse has to be turned out, as it's called, turned out once a day, at least for an hour, and the way it is, you have this area which we have right here, this is, these are the turnout area, the turnouts, and here, so you divide the, let's say maybe it is the size, in this room, you could have two horses at the time, and they have social behavior, they run around, they move around, and they do produce waste at that moment, but all that waste is collected. So the person who is taking care of the horses goes around with a bucket with wheels, a little fork, and they put the waste, and then the waste is taken to the manure depot, it's just like a container, and then the container is taken away.
So, are you saying that that area to which you pointed could accommodate just two horses at a time?
No, 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 so, the area that we are, it is probably, I don't know, I want to say maybe eight, 10 times of this space, but in a space like this, you can accommodate two horses.
In this room?
In this room.
Okay, all right. So that would be maybe 20 horses that could be out at the same time?
No, no, so usually you have about, so if we have four paddocks, let's say, we have two horses in each paddock, eight horses at the time, and they are usually grazing around, and they, one of the neighbors said, "Well, you know, I don't want a parade of 40 horses in front of my house." And the idea of having 40 horses in a facility, like people that are not familiar with how this works, think of a stampede of horses roaming around and making noise and kicking and just disturbing the piece. This is not the case. So, probably, we're going to, we're working at the moment on a narrative of how this works. So, if you have a facility with 40 horses, at all times you may have eight horses in the paddocks.
So you get them all out in five hours, all out and back?
All day. So, there is, in a facility, there's usually a schedule, and it says, like, Joey comes out at 8:30 in Paddock One, this, and this, and this, and that. It is, it is quite organized. And usually, at the same time, there's maybe three or four horses in the indoor arena working and doing lessons. Usually there's maybe two horses in the outdoor arena doing work as well. So, 40 horses sounds like a lot, but someone who will drive into the facility will see maybe five, six horses visible at all times. So there's usually, from 40, there's usually five that are lame, and usually one is being shooed, and one is at the vet, and so it is probably the best way to visualize all this.
And so they'll be cleaned up after, after, you know, say, you know, the 40 horses are out, outside in that regular spa, that space?
As soon, usually they're working, as soon as the horse does its thing, someone comes with this little wheelbarrow, which is a bucket on wheels, and as soon as that happens, it is picked up, because the footing, the footing where that, the lessons are being taken, is very expensive. So it has cotton, it has, it's very, it's the most expensive part of the whole thing, the whole operation. You can spend a million dollars just in the footing for that. So when a horse poops, you pick it up right away. You don't want the manure to get mixed on the footing.
Right, and so you anticipate, I guess, like, maybe less people going up and down the spine road, or whatever it is?
That is going to be very, very rare. So, I would probably enjoy doing that, but not everyone does that. So sometimes, like, these horses can be six figures, and people don't want them, like, getting hurt on a rock and things like that. In some cases, seven figures, so, not mine, but it is not rare to see that.
So, just another question then, so if, is there going to be some kind of, you know, let's say, over time, you know, the place changes, and, you know, you have people who have less expensive horses, and they want to take them out on the spine, will there be some provision for making sure that in the areas that are outside of the controlled barn areas, that the manure is cleaned up? Is there any kind, is there any need for that? Is there, you know, because it just seems to me that when we're concerned about, you know, a lot of horses and a lot of manure, that we want to make sure that it isn't running off down into the creek.
Yeah, no, and for us to keep the value of our investment, it would be something that we want to do. Like, we don't want erosion from, I mean, we thought we would have the trails, because it would be an attractive thing to go around and go on a trail ride, but the topography and what you guys have pointed out have made us change our minds about that. So, we could, based on your concern, we could say on our guidelines for use of the property that no horses are allowed beyond the boundaries of what is under the control of the facility, and therefore, manure will not be an issue.
Yeah, because I think we're just concerned about, you know, fertilizer nutrients ending up in the pond, and there will be enough potential compromise of that just coming from the fact that you're going to have lawns around these houses, you know, which is another thing that we, you know, do want to know about.
Yes, and also, we have, we have a homeowners' association guidelines, and more than guidelines, law, like, how do you call that? The-
Homeowners' law?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm Rick O'Rourke, I'm the attorney for the applicant. There is a homeowners' association that must be approved by the New York State Attorney General's office, and that is reviewed and redlined, and typically, your attorney also has the opportunity to review portions of it that he or she believes is important, to make sure that it comports with whatever the guidelines and the conditions are of the approval from the planning board. As far as the manure management plan, that manure management plan that's in this Part III, a similar one was prepared and reviewed with another equestrian facility, and AKRF were the consultants on that, and so they're well familiar with manure management plans. Finally, as far as the footing is concerned, I live in Putnam County, town of Southeast, North Salem is our border, within about a mile or two, and Old Salem Farm is a facility where they have the Olympic equestrian trials. And so it's right near my house, I've been down there with my daughters. What they pay for in terms of those paddocks, it's like buying minks and putting them in your living room. So, quite frankly, what Ulysses is saying is quite true. The maintenance of a facility like this, that's what makes it valuable, so.
Right, but what we're concerned about, though, is less within, you know, obviously those are controlled areas, right? And you're obviously going to take care of those. It's when it's outside those controlled boundaries that we just want to make sure that they're, you know, that manure doesn't, you know, if you're, if part of the goal here is to allow people to ride on the spine, you know, we just want to make sure that things are taken care of there as well. Do you know what I mean? Does that make sense to you?
The pond, absolutely, well, people aren't going to be able to go near the pond, so, I mean, we're certainly not going to allow the horses, and clearly, as far as the-
The spine road is the item, the only road.
Oh, the spine road, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, you know, more fertilizer nutrients, you know, that could make their way via stormwater, et cetera, to contribute to deterioration of the pond. Okay. So-
I think I should also add that, you know, there's going to be limitations on those lots that are going to minimize the lawn area and maintain as much forest as possible, so, so we've looked at that and discussed that before, and in fact, that subject came up the other night at the conservation board. There will be, you know, there's enough road and enough common facility that there's going to be some, some regu, there has to be some regular maintenance and regular, you know, staff to work on the road. So if we do put a pathway along the edge of the road so people could ride up and ride along the road, there are going to be staff out there to clean that up. And, so I, I don't, with regard to the, I wouldn't have guessed about Uly's comment that the seven-figure horse is going to not be allowed on that old trail, but I can, if I had a seven-figure horse, it certainly wouldn't be allowed on that trail.
It'd be in my living room.
But, right, I'd, yeah, I'd be walking the trail. So, I, I don't think that's a ser, that's a really serious thing, on the roads maybe more so, but we will have staff to clean that up.
And that'll be written into the homeowners?
Sure, the homeowners' association is going to be responsible and have, you know, I live in a subdivision with a homeowners' association, and there's a rule for everything, you know, there's a rule for every single thing, and if I don't pay my dues, I get a, you know, I can get a lien on my house-
At least a nasty grant.
And so there's some real teeth in this.
If I just interject at the moment, it's sort of an allied point. Somewhere in here, has there been discussion of dredging or owner pond if it starts to silt up? Is that addressed anywhere in this?
No, we haven't, I don't believe so.
I'm just wondering if the impacts, aside from the chemical impacts on it, erosion and stuff like that, is that something that's to be-
Well, the SWIP is going to take care of that, and the only direct, the SWIP involves all sorts of measures to prevent, to prevent the silt from getting carried on stormwater into, into the pond, or into, into the drains, or wherever. So that will be addressed in some detail, in considerable detail, in the SWIP. The only place where there is some, where it has to be particularly watched is when we install a dry hydrant, because that has to go into the pond, there has to be work in the pond in order to install that.
Glenn, I wanted to thank you for putting this, the manure, the animal waste plan schematic in here. It's starting to paint a better picture, so we have the stalls, and then we have a concrete pad, then we have a 40-yard dumpster covered by what sounds like a pavilion-type roof-
Right, like a bus stop.
Or something, okay. So, when we, when we start getting more specific, well, first, could you sketch it out on there for us, just show us where this retaining wall and concrete pad and pavilion would be?
I think it's over here. I'll check it, but I believe that that's it, I think it's over there.
No, I know what, pardon me?
By the park.
Do you know where it is?
Right here, right?
Yeah. Okay. Now, I know when you make an application, which is not the case here, but when you make an application to save the NRCS for subsidies for an animal waste plan, they need, I'm getting rid of that. When you make a submission to the NRCS and you're looking for funding for, say, for an animal waste plan, they want to see the real mechanics of it, and, you know, they want to see how exactly is the skid steer going to get from here to here? So, they want to see that it gets done, and that it's a doable process, and that there's a workflow to it. So, is there a chance that we might get some details like that moving forward? Just think- Just think about it because it's a, because it matters. Because if it's not set upright, it tends to not get done, which is why the places or agencies like the NRCS go into that kind of detail. Because if it doesn't work, if the things don't fit and the machines can't get in and out and around, it tends to not happen. So maybe if you think about that and then I'll, I'll leave you alone.
Okay.
Kim, a couple more. Yeah, I'm, sorry. Don't mean to go on forever. Um, so number, um, 11 in the impacts on open space and recreation. Um, can you, in the, it says, "The applicant is required and is committed to preserving at least 74.9% of its conservation subdivision property. In exchange for a density bonus, the applicant is also committed to providing public access to the preserved land. This would represent a positive impact on the recreational resources available to the citizens of Phillips Town. The addition of the equestrian facility, which will be open to the public by itself, represents a positive impact upon community recreational resources." Um, so can you? There's sort of a contradiction because earlier on when we're talking about traffic, there, it says that only, that the, people won't just be allowed to come to watch these equestrian events. They'll have to be people who know the people who are participating or whatever. So that, that doesn't feel like public access to me in, in the way that this seems to be met. So can you explain to me what, um, what exactly the public is getting for the, if, if they, if there's a density bonus? Like what the benefit to the public is here? Because this is a paid facility, right?
Right.
Right. Um, and in my mind, and I may be wrong, you know, something that's in the public benefit generally is not, um, is something that's not necessarily paid or that's, you know, like a, like a, you know, like the recreation department, for example, that it's, do you know what I mean?
Well, I, I know what you're saying, but I think you answered your own question when you said not necessarily.
You know, can you, but can you explain to me what the?
Well, there will be, there will be a portion of that stable that will be available for the public to board their horses for a fee. And, and so, so it's a, it's a facility that's available in town and they, it's, that may not, that's not for free, but the public access to the ground, to the land, and we are considering public access to the lake for fishing, um, which, you know, I think somewhere in there it talks about the, there's fishing going on there now.
Talks about how that, that it's, that, that it's not desirable because it's not legally, because it's trespassing.
Well, I mean, it, it's, there are people that are using the place without permission.
Yes.
Okay. So they'll have permission. I guess that's a benefit if we go, if we go, if we go that way. So, um, I think it's, it's, the public benefit is passive in nature. I, I think that's probably the best way to put it, except for the equestrian facility, which with a limited amount of space will be available for, for public to board their horses. Well, it, it could be the difference between 23 and 25.
One more.
Can you move the mic? Oh, sorry. Yeah, so that was, um, my other note here is, you know, private road, private road, public access. Um, so, um, I, I, it's, it's just there's a, to me, there's a tension between like what's, between public access, what, what public access constitutes, right? So, um, let me see if I have anything else. And then I'll leave you alone. Oh, you know, there was one thing I did want to ask about the traffic study. So there's, where your traffic study starts and it counts all the trips on Route 9, um, for the first day it says it's 24 hours, but actually it shows no traffic till 11 o'clock in the morning. I was just wondering if that was a mistake or?
Well, it sounds like it may have been a mistake if that's, if, if it was Route 9, yeah. We'll, we'll look at it.
You know, just to-
Can't argue with that.
Maybe it was the morning once his name's place was on fire.
Oh, that, you know, maybe that was, that may have been the case when they, when they actually cut the traffic off. But.
And then, so we have a lot of studies about how fire trucks could get around within the development and how trailers would get around within the development, but I may have missed it. Is there a, a drawing of how, um, those trucks are going to get out onto Route 9? Or do you not have to show that?
I don't.
In turn, you know, could these?
I would have thought there would be, but I know what you're talking about. I'll-
Yeah.
Yeah, that was mentioned in the AKRF report, that they were looking for a large-scale plan.
Okay.
I know we did all those intersections of this.
Right. And I guess the last thing is I'd like to, um, just reiterate what was in the AKRF report about site, you know, being able to see into the site. Um, that Route 9 isn't the only place that we're concerned when, with things like the Schofield Ridge where there are public hiking trails.
Well, the Schofield Ridge was addressed in the Lyon Soil Mine. It was mentioned in there. I think that, that the AKRF report criticized the visual for not having considered, uh, Old Albany Post Road. It used to be Mozier Road that goes, or maybe it's now Mozier Road, um, that goes around over by Ericson Trees.
Yeah.
And, um, and East Mountain Road north as it passes the property and Horton Road as it comes into the property. When I first heard that comment, I drove, I drove those things and looked. Um, I, we'll, we'll address it, but I can tell you that, um, Mozier Road or Old Post Road just does not have the opportunity to see it because of the growth in, in that wet, it's all wetland in there. And all that growth in that island formed by the Mozier Road and Route 9 is, 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 except for one, one, a couple of little things, it's just all tall second-growth stuff and it doesn't have any opportunity to see. East Mountain Road, you probably, if you were walking along, look down the hill, you could, you, you could see something if you were craning your neck to do it, but you're not going to, you're, that's a very steep drop-off right there. You're going to either look over it. If you're driving, you're, you're not going to, you're not going to see it. Um, and if you do see it by getting out and walking and, and looking through, you're going to be looking through, um, a significant amount of forest. Uh, and as you walk, as you, as you drive, and I drove up Horton Road and get to that broad elongated cul-de-sac there, and you look, what happens is you probably will get a glimpse of a building across the pond. Uh, but for the most part, the, the, and that's at the very end of Horton Road. And then as you drive down, what happens is you, you, you drop down and the dam builds up. So what you're looking up over the dam. And we'll, but we'll demonstrate that for you.
But what about Schofield Ridge?
Schofield Ridge, um, has a distant view. It's a narrow view. Um, it was, the visual analysis that was done for the Lyon Soil Mine, which is, which is in the environmental, um, conservation, uh, conservation document, uh, that had a broader view of, of the mine because the mine opened up the side of the hill and cleared everything from, basically everything from Route 9 back up to the plateau and then into the plateau and left, left, left you with an exposed face. What happens here is that most of that plateau is, is left except for the road. And then what you get, I'm sorry, most of that side hill is left except for the road. And then when you get up to the plateau, the, you're still forested and it'll still be largely blocked. I'm not going to stand here and say you won't see some of it, but you're not going to see very much.
Well, especially in the winter though. I mean, in the, you know, the leaves are down and the, you know, the, the buildings are not going down into the ground. They're coming up from the ground.
They're coming up, but they're, they'll be, they'll be in a wooded air, they'll be in a wooded environment. Um, and I, I think that the report for the Lyons Mine plus the discussion demonstrates, demonstrates that. But we'll look at that too.
Okay. Because I, I just didn't see that the, it seemed to me that the mine, the mine was going down, so it wasn't the same as a house.
Well, the mine was going down, but, you know, you had, you had, you had a hill going up from Route 9 and the mine was pushing that hill down, but it was exposing a face behind it and leaving it and, and, and exposing it, not so drastic as the, the, the mining along where, um, tail has, it has the, you know, and that, and that back hill, you know, it's, it was going down too. Okay? So that's, that's, that's the thing that the mine would, would have produced. And there was an extensive planting plan to cook, to mitigate that. But here, we still have that forest cover going up the hill and then we don't start building until we roll off and get back onto the, onto the plateau.
Okay. All right.
Any more? I have two overarching, uh, questions for you, Glenn, generally, um, from AKRF's reports, uh, on the part three. Um, of course, they've got questions here on impacts on land, the whole, the whole spiel, surface water. Kim's been talking about groundwater flooding and so forth. Um, and, uh, aesthetic resource, plants and animals. I mean, these things, uh, there are some questions here that need to be addressed, but all good. And on top of that, the traffic impact study, I've noticed one, items one, four, seven, 10, 13, 15, 17, 18, and then new comments on the signal warrant analysis. These all have to be addressed. Can you come back to us?
Yes.
With a final report?
Yes. In fact, Mr. Canning has already, um, given us the material and told us what, how we're going to address the, the stuff in the traffic report. Um, we questioned some of the, some of those things and he will be talking to AKRF because, um, we have to talk about our impact on, they're suggesting we talk about our impact on Houston Road. And they said the two ma- the major roads, north and south. So for us to get, to go south, the first one that could be considered major and would be Houston, and I don't consider that major, but, and if we go north, it's the entrance to Home Depot. I, I just, we'll do something with it, but I find that a little bit over the top.
Somewhere in there mentions, um, drawing conclusions based on the distance from Route 301 to 84. And that's quite a span.
I think that they had, that was in the original one, and I think that that was the, um, that was an original comment by AKRF back in-
Okay.
-when they first did it.
And they pulled back from that?
That, we had a discussion with them. And I think, I think that, that thing shrank. Maybe that was why it shrank to Home Depot and Houston Road. That's not their suggestion. That's what our guy identified.
Yeah, because, well, the warrant analysis I imagine would be pertinent because not just Houston Road, but now you've got Glassbury, you've got, I don't know how many cars in there, but you've got 90 units, average one and a half cars per unit, and this on top of it. Um, but this is, indicates that there would be a push for a traffic light somewhere?
My understanding is that it will not. It definitely is, is, they, AKRF agrees that it is not at, at this point. They wanted to look at it again a year after, after the project is built, but we're talking quite a number of years before that will have to happen.
The approach to the main access road just below the PEMCOR building, uh, what they did at Glassbury, they put a deceleration lane, traffic coming north, uh, to decelerate to get off the road. Um, is that in contemplation?
No. And, and, um, you know, we're not 90 units. We're 25 at best.
You're also, uh, horse trailers and other things. I'm just asking. I mean, you're not contemplating it.
It's not being, it's, it's not being contemplated now and, and our advice has been that it's not necessary.
Okay. Ron, is there anything else we should be looking at right now?
No, I think you're taking care of it.
I do want to thank you for, um, giving me a number, which I didn't know, which is that there are about 12,000-plus cars on Route 9 in a 24-hour period every day. And coming off of East Mountain Road, it feels like that. So I, I appreciate that.
Coming off Revolution, it feels like they're all there at eight in the morning.
Kim, I think I have an answer for you on that, those zeros.
Yep.
The, uh, yeah. The, uh, the intent of putting out the, the traffic, the, the machine to count the cars was to have it run for a week. And I can see from the numbers here, they put it out, um, at a little, sometime after 11:00 in the morning on the seventh. And eight days later is when they picked it up, uh, according to this, at 10:44 a.m. Eight, so eight days later. So they got their week.
And it said it was like, that it started at, at the top of that page, it says it starts at zero.
It starts at, at midnight, but I think that's just an error with the machine and they should have noted, uh, that to clear up the confusion. But it's, it's, you can see after that point, it's consistent that there's counts on every single 15-minute period.
I just don't know why that was. Good, thank you.
Yeah.
So I guess you go and take this back, make the corrections, the concerns of AKRF on the impact study?
Yes, we will do that.
Can you just ask a question?
Yeah.
Do you mind if I?
Well, you know, it's not a public hearing. I know, we have entertained you in the past and there is, one of the questions in here is about the, discussing the formula for density, including a discussion of methodology for determining allowable counts. So they're going to address it. So I'd like to keep that for the next time. Yes.
I just have a question.
It's like at an auction.
Did you ever cut those trees down? You were going to do some maintenance and tree cutting in November. Was that done? Is it scheduled?
We did not. So we decided, no.
We had, we had to wait for the, the question back.
Yes, I just, I know it just came up two months ago. We're getting scheduled.
All right. Um, I just assumed here, any questions from HHLT, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Because if, if there's something we can take care of, we'll take care of it.
Michelle Smith, Hudson Highlands Land Trust. So the question I had actually doesn't have anything to do with lot count. Um, it's that the conservation board met on Tuesday night and my understanding is that they, uh, potentially have some additional questions other than ones that were mentioned here tonight and also other than ones that were mentioned in the AKRF memo. We have, uh, some overlap with those questions. Um, and I'm just wondering if you would entertain if we submitted those questions to you in writing. And of course, we'll copy the applicant, um, that you would consider both the questions that we have and that the conservation board has.
I would think we want to get it all out there and give the applicant a chance to answer them.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Uh, and the one thing I don't want to forget, we're on a short turnaround to next month.
All right.
Meeting's the 14th. It will be advertised.
We, I did, the conservation board, I did put them on notice that we were hoping to get this wrapped up and ask them to get those, uh, comments in.
Okay.
I, I just assumed they came directly. I don't mind them being reiterated, but I would like to have them directly.
Okay.
If I, if I may also ask if, whatever questions that the trust may have, if we could get that quickly too, so that we could turn around-
Yeah.
-the submission.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Ron, anything else?
No, that's the only point I was going to make, that these submittals have to come in timely.
Yeah.
Just, just to benefit both the board and the applicant.
Right. Okay. Uh, anybody, anything else from the board members? Move to adjourn. You want to go home?
I'm making a motion.
Second, all in favor? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.